Gila Meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and all the women at large Gloria Timmons will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
All the women Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Camau.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
All the women Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, I did, Madam President. On a few things. One thing on the agenda is the appointment of Liz Hanem as Economic Development Director. We, once Tim Cummings was promoted to the position of Administrative Services Director, we began seeking a new Administrative Services Director. And in doing so, we advertised widely. We formed an interview committee consisting of, of course, Mr. Cummings, Matt Sullivan, Lisa Photo, Celia Leonard, and Megan Karen, who interviewed a group of candidates. And ultimately, we came down to the decision of Liz Hanem. She was interviewed by the Personnel Committee a week ago and, or last Monday, a week ago Monday, and I think she did well there. She has a broad range of economic development experience in various states, including South Dakota, New Mexico, Gallup specifically, and now in Oregon. She was raised, grew up around Worcester, and that's the principal reason for her interest in coming back to the East Coast. She attended Bucknell in Pennsylvania for college and then received a master's degree in, a master's degree from Clark University, which of course is in Worcester. Not only does she bring a wealth of economic development experience from a whole group of different cities, giving her broad perspectives on economic development issues, but she, I think, fits the personnel, the position well in terms of her personality. She will be able to engage successfully with the business community throughout the city. She's visited and, of course, looked at the master plan and seen various areas of the city and is committed to trying to see and promote economic development in all the areas that we have, not only the downtown, but Amherst Street, Daniel Webster Highway, Northeastern Boulevard, in an effort to create economic opportunity for all citizens of Nashua. So I hope you will follow the unanimous recommendation of the Personnel Committee and confirm her for, as Economic Development Director. Of course, she's now in Oregon and intends to start late in May, maybe the second week in May. So she's not here tonight to be confirmed, but certainly she'll be watching and be interested in your action. I did want to mention, Madam President, that the Nashua Center for the Arts had its official opening on the first of April, back a week ago Saturday. And we had the ribbon cutting and some local performers, a series of them, performed at the center. There were hundreds and hundreds of people there, and I think everybody was very impressed with it. The first performances are this weekend, Thursday and Saturday. Spectacle, which is managing the center, says that they, the ticket sales have exceeded their expectations, so I think we're off to a good start. And I want to thank all of you for supporting that project throughout its life before the Board of Aldermen. I wanted to mention, Madam President, that we do have some other appointments tonight, and I just wanted to reflect on the fact that we really owe a lot to the citizen volunteers who are interested in serving on our various boards and commissions. The city could not operate without them. And we have a lot of dedicated citizens, and at least in the audience tonight, I see Philip Scontis, who's on for a couple of things, as well as Roger Wiseman and Scott McKnight. I don't know if there's anyone else here, but they will be sworn in, assuming you confirm them, which I believe you will. They'll all do excellent work for the city, and we appreciate their efforts and the efforts of all of the volunteers who make city government possible, really. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention that on the 22nd of April, we have the Earth Day Fair over at the library. The Econo, the Energy and Environment Committee has worked very hard on this, and they've come up with some really good ideas. Of course, there'll be a number of tables from green vendors around the area. And the, the Energy and Environment Committee will have a table, as well as the Community, Nashville Community Power. And one thing that I think people will be interested in and which will be a lot of fun is that there will be an electric car show. So people with electric cars will come and show them to the public. So, and if you've shopped at all in that area, you will, I think, learn that they're not that easy to actually test drive or actually even see because the orders are so far back that if you go to, like Chevy and ask, can I see a Bolt? They don't really have one there necessarily. So I think that will be fun for people to see that and will be an interest to many people in the community. But I encourage you to go to the, to the, the Earth Day Fair on the Saturday, the 22nd, and I think you'll have a good time if you do. And Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of Mayor. All the women Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up Earth Day, this thing we've been working hard on. And I will personally be there running a recycled craft for kids, but there's a lot of really great stuff that'll be happening, so I appreciate that. And I also just wanted to remark on Ms. Hanem's interview and the great work of that committee. I have been on the Personnel Committee since I walked in this chamber, and it was one of the best interviews, and I think she's going to be an incredible, incredible asset to the city. So looking forward to welcoming her.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Is the mayor aware of any area that might be dedicated to electric scooters?
Aware of what?
Any, any interest in Segways or things of that nature?
Into what?
Segways.
What?
A Segway?
Oh, yeah. Why don't you come to the fair and show people the Segway? You can demonstrate.
Recognition period. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of March 28th be accepted, placed on file, and reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Board of Education regarding approval of Resolution And communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, Jennifer Zinn's Nashua Assessing Department regarding data relative to O-22-028, increasing the veterans' tax growth.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period of public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two people signed up. First is Adam Marku.
Good evening. My name is Adam Marku. I live at Forge Jolory Lane. I'm also the president of the Nashua Teachers Union, and I'm here to speak upon the contract for the Secretaries, Unit C, that I also represent. This group is about 73 people, our smallest unit of the four NDU contracts, but their work is, is impeccable and so important to our school district. They keep our schools running. If you've ever been into a school, you have to get in through them. If you've ever called the school, you talk to them. If you've broken our copy machines, you deal with them. If the laminator is stuck, guess who? If you don't know what to do, that's who you start with. And they are such valuable assets to our community and bring so much to our schools, whether it's at the elementary schools, the middle schools, or our two high schools. They do a ver, a variety of things, and some of them are at Central Office working. So, you know, this group is unique because there's so many things going on with them. This contract, to some, may seem rather luxurious and large compared to other contracts, but I would note that their contracts between 2011 and this one being ratified, their overall increase between then was 16% total in those years. This one is a little more than 15% over three years? Sorry, we're negotiating, we did the pair contract at the same time, so I'm getting them running together. But this group, this goes a long way to getting them where they should be, where it goes in their contract. We did some nice language changes that were great collaboration with the school district on some of the changes that we needed in this contract. And it impacted their wages in a positive way, and ultimately-
One minute.
-they did accept the changes to the health insurance, which I now believe is the last group that had to do that, at least from the school district side of things. So I want to thank the Budget Committee for their recommendation and to the almost all of you for putting your name in support of this contract. I knew it was going to pass when I saw that there was 11 people on it already, but I wanted to come and express my gratitude to all of you for your support of not only the secretaries, but also the other three contracts that I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Westgate.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner and Bennett, 402 Amherst Street here in Nashua. Wanted to thank the board for giving me a couple moments to speak. I believe the board tonight will take up the so-called tannery legislation. As the board's aware from prior presentations and discussions, there are three proposed ordinances that deal with the land use code, to amend the land use code, to set forth the underpinning for the prospective tannery development. Also before the board is a resolution known as Resolution 23088, which would approve the so-called master concept plan, which sort of forms the basis of design for the tannery project. The three ordinances are O-2343, that deals with rezoning part of the land adjacent to the tannery site, part of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right of way, and the so-called Fimble piece, and a couple smaller little parcels. Ordinance 23044 is the text for the overlay district that would form the ability to create this type of development. And O-2345 is the creation of the overlay map, the overlay district, that would be governed by the text of the overlay ordinance. The last action this board take was a referral, a second hearing before the Planning Board and the Planning and Economic Development Committee because of amendments that were made to two of those three ordinances. One was a technical amendment involving legal descriptions, meets and bounds, we call it. And there was three amendments to the text of the overlay district, two of which were emanated from Alderman Jettie's comments dealing with defining accessory use and the scope of the so-called potential non-residential uses. The Planning Board favorably recommended the three ordinances. Last night, the Planning and Economic Development Committee favorably recommended them as well, as well as the resolution approving the master concept plan.
One minute.
So we would just respectfully request that the board do take these up tonight, hopefully approve all three ordinances and the resolution for the master concept plan. And all of us want to thank you for the time you've taken in this matter and senior staff at City Hall who've been invaluable in us processing this arrangement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Larry D. Goody, Chief Executive Officer of Penachuck, regarding notice of annual meeting of sole shareholders and proxy statement, proxy card, and annual report to the sole shareholder.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to recommend to elect the following individuals to the Penachuck Corporation Board of Directors until their successors are elected and qualified. Elizabeth A. Dunn, H. Scott Kleagle, Ralph Jenkins, and Deborah Navotny. To the Penachuck Corporation Board of Directors as Class B Directors, each for a three-year term and until their successors are elected and qualified, and to authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the sale, the sole shareholders to the Board of Directors of Penachuck Corporation.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract in excess of 1 million charter contracting company.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to award Charter Contracting Company LLC a contract for a reduced scope of services for the Phase III Stage II zigzag landfill expansion to include installation of temporary HDPE cap along the Phase III side slopes in the amount not to exceed 1,359,200. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund 54210 Construction Services/Fund.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
nominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 22nd, 2023 joint meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 6th, 2023 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted, placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 9th, 2023 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 21st, 2023 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held last night regarding proposed Resolution R-23088 and ordinances O-2343, O-2344, and O-2345. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. As most of you know, last night, the PDC meeting considered four pieces of legislation related to Mohawk Tannery, and I'll go through each of them. The first, R-23-088, is adopted, it was adopted and amends the city zoning map to rezone a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway, Interval Street, and Uly Street and land situated west of the Parkway, the RC Urban Residence District. The second, Ordinance O-23-043 establishes an overlay zoning district to be called the Veterans Memorial Parking Redevelopment Overlay District. The third, O-230, I'm sorry, 044 establishes a, the detailed zoning language of that overlay district that we discussed in the prior ordinance. And then O-23045 approves a master concept plan for the proposed redevelopment of the tannery site. We ultimately considered the amended versions of the detailed zoning language and the RC rezoning, both of which were recommended by the, the three of us at the meeting last night. And all legislation was favorably recommended to the full board.
Thank you, Alderman Moran. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the change from alternate to member of Phil Scontis, Philip Scontis, 14 Ashland Street, Nashua, to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire February 24th, 2026. If you would come forward, Mr. Scontis, to take the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Downtown Improvement Committee of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God. Thank you, Phil.
Congratulations. Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees, there being no objection, I will confirm the new appointments to the Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees. Philip Scontis, 14 Ashland Street, Nashua, with a term to expire February 14th, 2026, and Lindsay Rinaldi, Tullock Street, Nashua, with a term to expire February 14th, 2027. I only see Mr. Scontis, I do not see Lindsay Rinaldi. She'll be sworn in at a later date.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's all. Congratulations.
Economic Development Director.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Liz Hanem, 1212506, Northeast Haslow Street, Unit B, Portland, Oregon, as the Economic Development Director, serving at the pleasure of the mayor. As we've heard from the mayor, she is not here with us this evening and will be sworn in at a later date.
Business and Industrial Development Authority.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment to the Business and Industrial Development Authority, Scott McKnight, 33 Franklin Street, Nashua, for a term to expire March 28th, 2026. Is Mr. McKnight, oh, come forward.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Business and Industrial Development Authority of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God. Thank you, Scott.
Congratulations.
Ethics Review Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of, to the Ethics Review Committee, Roger Wiseman, 88 Peel Road, Nashua, with a term to expire March 14th, 2026, and David Tenza, 10 Monica Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire March 28th, 2026. I don't see Mr. Tenza in the audience, he'll be sworn in at a later date.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Ethics Review Committee of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-090 authorizing the expenditure of up to 13,000 on the Conservation Fund for Beaver Management Work in the Hassel Brook area.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R-23-090, and I'd like to speak on it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is something requested by the Conservation Commission to deal with flooding of the Hassel Brook as it meand, as it comes from underneath the Everett Turnpike and meanders its way under Lund Road and Elmont Street and eventually dumps into Salmon Brook. Beavers have caused flooding, and so the Conservation Commission would like to spend up to 13,000 to deal with that problem. And just for everyone to know, the Conservation has, Conservation Commission has about a million and a half dollars in its conservation fund, so they can well afford this. And I ask that you support it. Thank you.
Heard the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Alderman Camau.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I regret that I wasn't here when this got the first reading so that I could sign on to it, but I'm glad to see it coming forward. I had several conversations with Department of Public Works after some of my constituents along Lund Road brought this issue to me. The Beaver Dams in the Brook are causing the flooding, and then when they break apart, they're actually clogging up the culverts that go underneath Lund Road. So this work will do extensive cleaning of that area all the way down, I believe, past Bishop Gerton. It will go a long way towards relieving some of that flooding that is impacting those neighborhoods. So I'm glad to see this come through tonight, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2390 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-092 relative to the supplemental appropriation of 1,771,199 of fiscal year 2023 unanticipated revenue into fund number 1001 Capital Improvements, Department 160 Public Works Administration in Engineering.
All the women Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for final passage of R-23092.
By roll call.
Do we have to do a by-roll call? I thought that was a by-roll call. Proceed to Charter Section 49.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call her off?
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
All the women Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
All the women Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2392 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-096 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union Local 1044 AFT, AFL-CIO, Unit C, Secretaries from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026 in related transfers.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23096. I'd like to just speak a couple words to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this passed the Budget Committee unanimously, and it is a well-structured contract, and the secretaries in the bargaining unit are extremely valuable to not only the education in Nashua, but also the city of Nashua.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Resolution 2396 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-097 relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23097.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R-23-098 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $10 million to fund additional costs for the design and construction of a new middle school and renovations and expansion of Penachuck Middle School, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22098 by roll call pursuant to Chapter, Section, Charter, Section 49. Like to speak to it?
Alderman Dowd.
Just to pass budget unanimously, and this, what this does is, is when we pass the guaranteed maximum price for the McCarthy School-
the guaranteed maximum price for the McCarthy School, we knew we were going to need at least this much money and possibly less. As we went through the process with all that's going on in the world, to be entirely safe and not have to come back at all again, we request the $10 million, any that's not used will be returned to the city, just like the motion we passed a minute ago, or it can be reallocated by this board.
Motion is for final passage. By roll call, Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to say that I thought that the discussion that we had in the Budget Meeting around this approval of the bond, I think, was, was good, and it's important in those committee meetings to have those discussions. I think Alderman Dowd and I might have had different definitions of one thing or another. I was able to figure out as far as what the total budget was versus the guaranteed maximum price of what the building was, but I appreciated the conversation. I'm going to support this tonight, and, you know, cheers to our committee process, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President, I have a question through you to Alderman Dowd, and he may not know this, but I saw that the Board of Education voted five to three on it, is that accurate, and do we know why there was three votes against it?
Alderman Dowd.
Seems like we should be doing it.
Yes, that was the correct vote, and I would hesitate to try and read the minds of the people that voted against it. I think there are other issues involved rather than the actual motion itself, so it's fully supported by the rest of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2398 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-100 authorizing Penchuk Corporation and Penchuk East Utility Inc. to enter into a loan with Cobank ACV.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize. I motion for final passage of R-23-100.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23100 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-106 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Police Commission and the Nashua Police Supervisors Association from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23106, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I don't think I'd be met with much debate if, when I, when I say that we have an excellent police department here in the city of Nashua. It's, it's a compliment to the women and men that are on that force, but it's also the leadership within that department that make it run so well. This contract for the next four years takes care of those leaders, those sergeants, those lieutenants that lead Nashua Police Department, and I will absolutely get behind this, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President, I believe when this came before the Board originally, I was absent, and that's why my name is not on it, otherwise I would be a strong and proud supporter, I am a strong and proud supporter of this, and I look forward to supporting it this evening.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23106 is declared duly adopted. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of Resolution R-23-088.
Motion is to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R-23-088 approving master concept plan for Mohawk Tannery redevelopment.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-088, and like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, as I discussed earlier through my verbal report committee, this resolution would establish basically setting up an urban residence zoning overlay, no, sorry, not overlay, changing the zoning to RC Urban Residence District to allow for the project that Tannery start. It's a very big project, the city needs this project, and I hope everyone here on the Board can support this, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Just as a comment, I also attended the meeting last night of Planning Economic Development Committee, and I had asked Community Development and Director Sullivan just to confirm that this had already been approved through the planning board process or been brought before them, I just wanted to make sure, and we also discussed ensuring that residents were up to date on the different legislative steps, and he is looking into creating a website which, or a website page on the city's website that would be a project page and provide these kind of incremental updates as we go, and, you know, what steps are left to be taken.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2388, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2388 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-23-048 exempting games of chance used for state-licensed charitable gaming from the amusement devices article in the Nashua Revised Ordinances.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23048, I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, these are machines that are already licensed by the state, they use for charitable gaming, there was some confusion about what's going on in Manchester, there were some machines up there that were, that they do charge for, but it's actually the same thing we would do here if we actually allowed illegal machines to be used, and I'm sure Alderman Clea will back me up, because we've done extensive talking with Manchester, this, they, they tax for machines that are not part of the charitable gaming, they're technically illegal, they call them gray machines, and what they do is, in Manchester, something else, but they're not the charitable gaming machines. So they do not charge for the charitable gaming machines, and no city in town, the state of New Hampshire does.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm about to make a statement that I have not verified with the state, but it was conveyed to me that these are state-licensed machines and state-approved machines, and as such municipalities are not allowed to do that. I'm making the statement based on comment that, speaking to a state rep and an Alderman in, in Manchester, I have not verified that with the state itself, but, the law of recognition, but I do believe that that does sound properly from, based on what I was able to read and so on, so, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion, that motion carries, and Ordinance 2348 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-23-050 amending the general assistance guidelines to permit updates to the financial standards by the Welfare Department.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to move for final passage of O-23-050.
Motion is for final passage, is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, through you, could I ask our welfare officer, Mr. Mack, a question? Is he here?
Oh, he is here. Mr. Mack.
Good evening.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you. I have a question regarding updating the financial standards. Had a constituent come to me a couple weeks ago, and I'm not sure how it would play into this or if it changes it, but essentially, she was a female fleeing domestic violence with her child, came to the city welfare office, she did get referred to Bridges and such, but in order to pay for her hotel voucher while she fled the DV, she had to pay down her savings account, which she had maybe a thousand dollars or some, something in it, in order to qualify to get out of that situation. Does this help that situation and all this ordinance? Does that change how someone would have to spend all their money to flee domestic violence and gain city support?
Bob Mack, welfare officer for the city of Nashua. Alderman Moran, that is not specific to the financial standards, the financial standards are the dollar amounts of which we base eligibility. Another piece of eligibility is available resources that applicants have, that they may need to utilize to cover their own expenses, and depending on the circumstances, whatever their resources are, we evaluate those resources versus the expenses that they need to cover, and are they able to do that for a period of time, and then after those resources are exhausted, we may provide the general assistance. So it's not directly related to this, this piece of legislation, but it's, it's part of our general assistance guidelines in operation.
May I? So I would love to meet with you if we can maybe do an updated ordinance or resolution, whatever it might be, to, you know, maybe there's certain situations where we can waive certain financial pieces or raise the requirement so someone who is fleeing domestic violence can get our support, so we don't have to keep them in that position longer than they need to be.
We could definitely have further conversation about that. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Just wanted to clarify what this is, as far as my understanding is, and I've been, you know, meeting with Mr. Mack a number of years, is that this allows his department to be a little bit more nimble in updating the welfare guidelines instead of coming to us once a year, may actually allow them to update them and to reflect what's going on more frequently, so it's really, it's a housekeeping item allowing the welfare department to, you know, take a little bit more ownership and make sure that people can get the things they need.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Alderman Lopez.
Just an observation, while Alderman Kelly is correct about an element of it becoming, introducing the concept of a self-updating or less bureaucratic process for keeping up with the, the financial standards in the area, where Director Mack references eligibility, he's also talking about the eligibility of the reimbursement requested, so if I, for example, were staying in a shelter and said, oh, I have a lease here that I could have with Loft 34, that rental amount might exceed the amount in the guidelines of the welfare guidelines, we're looking for a slightly more modest solution to some situations, and because those guidelines exist, and they're, Loft 34 is an outside example, but because they exist relative to the market value of different apartments and rental properties, those rental properties keep going up in price, so we have to keep up with them, and we have to make sure that we are allowing eligible housing to be defined by what people are able to access and need today, rather than what they were able to access maybe pre-COVID when the average rental amount was two or $300 less, so there, we have had to update because of the shortage of housing capacity, because of rents being raised due to the marketability of those different units, and we can't necessarily keep waiting every year to do it without having people run into a situation where the units that they're trying to get into so that they are able to resolve or stabilize their housing are still too expensive for any kind of assistance program. So it definitely does improve and streamline the administrative oversight process and puts it into the city welfare's oversight, but it also is a necessary adjustment that is continually made every year because the price of rent is going up every year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 2350 is declared duly adopted. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second and third readings of ordinances O-23-043, O-23-044, and O-23-045.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, I'm just looking for clarification as to why we're spending the rules, was it, it was at your committee last night?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I guess I'm just confused why it's coming back for a second and third reading instead of just a recommendation for final passage.
Maybe Director Sullivan.
It basically has to do with the timeframe in order to get the work done in a, on time and efficient manner, but Director Sullivan's much more, if you, of course, through you, Madam President.
Sure.
I may be able to address this, but I might actually have to ask Corporation Council for a response, too, so I, I believe the, the request was for second and third reading, I believe final passage could also be considered, though, am I incorrect on that? This is ultimately for final adoption of these ordinances, I don't believe we need a second and third reading, per se, but I could be, I could be mistaken.
It's typical to read, at least by title, matters of legislation immediately before they're voted on. I think these have already had a second reading previously when it was removed from committee and sent back for additional public hearing because of amendments, so that's why it would be, at least in some cases, a third reading, so it, we typically don't have third readings, but if we've already had two, then it's a fact, oh, the next one would be the third. Typically, we do have second readings, the first one it is introduced, and the second one it comes back from committee.
So it seems it would be a third reading.
Yes, see?
Yes, apologies.
People that are much more qualified to answer these technical questions.
Motion is to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Third reading of O-23-043 amending the zoning map by rezoning portions of the Veterans Memorial Parkway, Intervell Street, and Huey Street in land situated west of the Veterans Memorial Parkway to C Urban Residence, R-C District.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23-043 as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended, as amended, discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President, I, I just wanted to, to comment that, you know, for the, for the public who's trying to keep track of, of what's going on here, you know, what we're doing, if this passes, and if the next two pass as well, what we're doing is we're changing the zoning of, of that area, we're not approving the project yet, you know, still, the project still has to go before the planning board, and the project still has to come bef, the developers have to come back to the, have to come to the Board of Alderman with, with the agreement, and the agreement, you know, it talks about the financing, you know, the, the cleanup, you know, the EPA involvement, you know, how this whole project is going to, you know, who's going to do what, who's going to pay for it, how it's going to be paid for, you know, all of those details are not before us yet, you know, these are, these are, it's a very complicated project, there are a lot of different steps that have to be taken, but all we're doing tonight is approving the, the changes in the zoning, which, if the agreement gets approved and adopted, you know, will allow the developer to proceed with, with this project, so, you know, for, for people who are watching and are interested in all of those details, we haven't got there yet, and, you know, that's still to come before us, so, I just, I don't know if anyone else was, had that question, but I wanted to offer that explanation.
Thank you. Further dis, Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment in addition to what my colleague was saying, is it is pretty important to have a project of this size and complexity done in a diligent manner, and the committee did rightfully identify different opportunities for amendment, some of those amendments were more significant than others, there was one, for example, that adjusted the boundary by, I think, like six inches, so while those need to be done, and in the event that we didn't thoroughly or carefully plan this out, we might find a completely different use contemplated by a developer that we didn't necessarily allow or plan for. that we didn't necessarily allow or plan for, an example being Nashua plant. We didn't think that that would be what somebody saw in a residential area as being the case, but that's why it's important to amend and update these different zoning elements. But the other side of it is we need a developer who's able to proceed through a complex and difficult plan in a manner that is timely enough for them to execute it. So, you know, weather's getting warmer, we are starting to look at this upcoming season kind of being spent with the development and creation of the process. And so they probably are thinking farther ahead, like we need, they need to secure their funding, they need to secure their planning and their different rules. So while we do want to be very diligent with how we're looking at the different legal aspects of this, we also don't want to hold them up with our administrative process, which is send it back to committee and then, you know, when that committee meets, review it. So it was fully endorsed and vetted by the Economic Development Committee and I would say it would be, I will be supporting moving it forward. And then additionally, I had requested that the Community Development Office look at creating a project page so that it's much more easy for residents and even legislators to track the progress of this. Thank you.
Further discussion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I was looking at the land use codes around this as, as this legislation was percolating and maybe through you to Director Sullivan. In 190-17 under residential districts, it lists off a bunch of the different codes that we have. Of those are RC, which this is being rezoned to. In paragraph D, it says, "Specific residential district criteria, the following standards apply to all residential districts. All two-family dwellings duplexes shall be structures consisting either of two separate dwelling units on separate floors or of two separate dwelling units," and on and on and on. My question is, this development is, is not two-family, it's multi-family, there's multiple floors, four to five stores, stories, excuse me, of apartments and whatnot. How does this affect that? How do those two tie together?
Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, for the record. First of all, I always appreciate an opportunity to talk about the technicalities of the land use code here at these meetings, seriously. But it's a great question. And so overlay districts and the, the Veterans Memorial Parkway overlay district that's being contemplated to be installed this evening, overlay districts can operate in really two manners. One is being more restrictive and one is actually loosening restrictions on the, on the zone that sort of lies below it. In this case, the Veterans Memorial Parkway overlay district will interact with an RC zoning district below it. The Veterans Memorial Parkway district actually loosens the permitted uses within that underlying RC zone, therefore taking away the need of this proposal to comply with Section 190-17D that you referred to, Alderman Sullivan. And so the overlay will actually supersede that underlying RC zoning, except in cases where the underlying RC zoning has more specificity to it than what's contemplated by the overlying zone. So it's really the overlying zone will supersede where appropriate. In other cases, the RC zone may, may govern. Such is the complexity of overlay districts and some of the experience we've had here in the city of Nashua, but we believe this overlay is quite clear in the way that it operates. But that 190-17 will not apply to this area should the overlay district be approved.
Okay. Could I have a follow-up, please?
Yes.
Thank you. If you look at what we're doing here and then you take out your crystal ball and you were to, you were to then take what we're doing here and project it into the future, are we shooting ourselves in the foot somewhere down the road in another part of the city that says, well, you have it, you have it here in this section of the city and I'd like to do it here, which then could lead to lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera? So I'm just, just wondering if by making the exception here, could it hurt us down the road?
Director Sullivan.
Thank you very much. It's, it's a great question and I think it's, it's always the rule of unintended consequences that we need to be contemplating with any zoning action. I, I don't think we run the risk of creating a situation here that could be held against the city in some form or another down the road. What I think we're doing is creating an environment where an overlay zone is being used to achieve a set of very specific and measurable public and community benefits in exchange for a set of zoning relief criteria that benefit the redevelopment of a property. I tend to think, and it's difficult to take out the crystal ball, but I tend to think that should another site of this type, of which there are very few, present itself to the city in the future, I do think there could be a contemplation that this type of zoning would be used to incentivize redevelopment. However, what I think I've said consistently with this specific redevelopment proposal is that the situation is so unique because of the financial component, but also because of what this site is, that I think it's very unlikely that what the city is doing here could be used against it as part of some other redevelopment or development proposal in the future. The, the fact that this is unique, I believe protects us against that.
Okay. And now you're on the record.
Correct, correct. And, and again, the law of unintended consequences, you know, I, we've looked very closely at this and, and had that in mind, but I feel relatively confident to the extent that I can in what I do, that this will not be used against us. I also feel confident because I know we're going to be recodifying the land use code over the next two years. And so if we realize that things have been put in place that we're not comfortable with, this board will have a role in actually unwinding some of those and correcting them. I don't think this overlay will be one of those pieces.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Further discussion. Alderman Lopez.
I would also probably go on the record as pointing out that if we create an overlay district which has specific rules for a specific area and someone attempts to make the argument that because their area is, wants those different things, we can point to the fact that it doesn't have an overlay district and say, okay, well, you don't have the modifying criteria that are relevant. And that creates the opportunity for people in the neighborhoods to say, do we or do we not want that overlay before a developer might propose a project that the residents are very strongly against? And I think that's also an example that we can probably use as we start to look at land use codes and say, okay, well, this is where overlay districts have been useful and very effective and this is where they're no longer a good idea or no longer being used. I think, again, speaking to the unique nature of this project, the unique nature of this project is that it's, should have been a super fund site 30 years ago and hasn't been cleaned up or made safe since then. And right now, we have open pools of contamination that are exposed to the air that we, we can't keep exposing residents to and, and the rest of the city to. And we have an opportunity to develop it and encapsulate it and reduce the impact to the environment and the threat that a, a large-scale flood would represent. So that's why this project is unique and that's why it's important to move forward with this. And to get a developer who's willing to clean up someone else's mess from a private company that, that has dissolved itself and the city can't hold accountable is unique. So I will be supportive of this.
Further discussion. Motion is for final passage of O-2343 as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance 2343 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Third reading of O-23-044, amend establishing the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment overlay district.
Alderman Moran.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23-045.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance 2344 is duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O-23-045, amending the zoning map by adding the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment overlay district.
Alderman Moran.
Did I do the wrong one last?
No.
No. Oh, I did. I did do the wrong one. I'm sorry. So we already passed O-045. Too many on here, Donna, for me. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23-044 as amended.
Okay.
Is that out of order?
We voted on O-2345 instead of 44?
So we'll go back to 44.
We'll just go back. You're good. Okay. The, the motion by Alderman Moran is for final passage of O-2344 as amended. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance 2344 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-109, authorizing Penetech Corporation and Penetech Waterworks to renew its fixed asset line of credit with TD Bank and ag.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penetech Water Special Committee.
First reading of R-23-110, authorizing Penetech Corporation, Penetech East Utility and to enter into a term loan to renew a fixed asset line of credit with Cobank ACB.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dowd and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penetech Water Special Committee.
First reading of R-23-111 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $365,083.34 of fiscal year 2023 unanticipated revenue into fund number 7024 Open Abatement Expendable Trust Fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 24th in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-23-112 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $18,000 and $18,009 of fiscal year 2023 unanticipated revenue into fund number 7026 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clay, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 24th in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-23-113 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $35,360.50 of fiscal year 2023 unanticipated revenue into the fund 7026 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clay, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 24th, 2023 in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-23-114 relative to the transfer of $5,000 from the Department 194 contingency account, 70100 general contingency to Department 144, Edgewood, and Suburban Cemeteries, accounting classification 51 salaries and wages.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dowd and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-23-115, authorizing the mayor to enter into a federal aid project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of constructing an accessible ramp to the Cotton Mill Transfer Bridge and to accept an appropriate $300,000 for the project.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, Alderman, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 24th, 2023 in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-23-052, desiring the Joyce Park Wildoos Sanctuary as a city conservation land.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Period for public comment. I have one person signed up, Stephen Skare.
Hi, Stephen Skare, 111 East Tobart Street. I just wanted to draw your attention to Mine Falls near the Pine Street extension over by where the Gate City fencing is. There's a trail that went by that was built there, I think about 15 years ago, after there was a violent assault among the homeless camp in an area that was called Pine Island. So it was cleaned up, put a nice, a nice trail there because people realized it wasn't a, a safe situation. I was just back there again, just walking on the trail and it's, it's really crowded and, I, I mean, with garbage. I don't know how many, how many different tent sites are there. Expect as weather war is getting warmer, there, there's more, but there, there's garbage anywhere and God knows what else. I don't think it's too hygienic. Nothing I suggest, we, we all couldn't agree maybe on one solution, but what we're doing right now, just seeding land over to people with addiction problems and mental illness and leaving them in an unsafe and unclean situation, doesn't seem like a good idea. So I'm just requesting that you look into this and see if you can find an, an acceptable solution because whatever you're doing is going to be better than what's, what's there right now. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over this side tonight. Remarks, Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm sorry, Madam President. And this is just to, I didn't want to do it at, at committee announcements because it's for a, a May 3rd meeting for the Penetech Special Committee. Donna has sent out a message, we're going to have to have a, a meeting on May 3rd, so if you could give back to her and let her know whether or not you can make that. I know there's another event going on that day, but it's important that we know whether or not we'll have quorum. So thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I know the mayor brought this up earlier and most of us were there, I think, maybe even all of us, were at the opening of the Performing Arts Center. It was a wonderful event. I got to go for the first part with my middle child and she enjoyed walking around and also meeting everyone. In the second half, my wife and I got to enjoy the shows and then we left, I mentioned this last night at the PDC, we left for an early dinner through the shows and we had to go all the way down to the Hidden Pig in order just to find a table that was open. And it wasn't even a table, we had to take the bar. So the impact of the opening was substantial and, you know, Director Cummings, the mayor, you know, I know the mayor didn't like taking credit for anything, but it was a really well-done opening and I'm very excited for it. And I, antecdotally, I'll, I'll share this joke and Alderman Clemmons could probably support me on this. It's already happened to Alderman Camo, but I introduced my daughter to Alderman Clemmons and she just ignored him, looked at me and said, where's the mayor?
Good story.
So, and Alderman Camo had a similar incident with both my daughters around the same, around Christmas time for the holiday stroll. So a big impact on the kids of my family, I guess, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Lopez.
Yep, I just wanted to remind the public that on May 16th, we're organizing a job fair, organized in partnership with the National Public Library and by the Greater National Continuum Care and organization of, or a collaboration of different organizations working to end homelessness and address the needs as such. So any employers that are looking for candidates, anyone who's trying to fill some city staff departments and looking for people who are motivated and, you know, immediately employable and accessible, that's a great opportunity for it. Over the weekend, Stepping Stones also made a pretty exciting announcement that they're, they've probably taken the biggest step in at least a decade to address the issues of youth homelessness, individuals under 25 who are homeless, including minors. And so they're working towards executing a emergency shelter for, for youth as well as a transitional housing program to help them not only intervene with the housing emergencies, but also to help them develop the, the systems that they need to continue to pay rent and provide for sustainable housing. Those are some pretty important systems, particularly transitional housing has a very important role in our city because if people aren't able to build up support systems and mechanisms that are sustainable, then we put a lot of work into getting them into a place and then they aren't able to maintain it. There was a lot of concern about the transitional housing program, Mary's Place, and the Front Door Agency announced that they were taking over ownership and management of it, which I thought was very exciting and very interesting. So I just wanted to reassure the public that that program will continue. It houses a number of single female adults in our community, various age and medical condition. And then finally, I would, I would like Um, and then, uh, finally, I would, I would like to apologize to the individuals who are walking through the trail and might be distressed by the life experiences and tragedies that others experience. I know that when people go through Mine Falls, they're not necessarily looking for a front door into all the social justice challenges that our society produces, but, um, we do have a very robust partnership between outreach workers who spend all week engaging people in campsites and, uh, in unsheltered homelessness, and DPW and National Police. And it's very important for legal purposes and humanitarian purposes not to just displace the homeless when they become inconvenient to the public. So we work with them to try to create more sustainable solutions, try to engage them in sheltering processes. If substance use disorder is an issue, then we help them into rehabilitation processes. And there's a lot of work being done every week, every day, uh, to that end. We just had a cleanup last weekend of a site. There was some public concern because the public felt that the city may have just removed it summarily, but I was able to verify that the people that were living there were engaged in different programs and were able to find stable housing through partnerships with Greater National Mental Health, and that public, the Public Health Department and DPW did collaborate and coordinate. There are additional cleanup days that are being done in coordination with people who are outreach workers and are trained and have resources to offer to people that are transitioning out. And DPW has been very, very responsive to such concerns, but DPW also does have limited capacity in terms of how quickly they can respond to things, what resources they have because of staffing and budget size. So we do try to address the system, uh, the situations as fairly to everyone as possible. Sometimes it doesn't impact people in a proportionate manner. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I, uh, too, was able to go to the opening of the Performing Arts Center, and I was very happy to, to be there. It was a tremendous showing of support. The, the event was sold out, and, um, you know, they put on a wonderful, uh, performance. And I think, really, it's a testament to, um, the community coming together and collaborating. I know when that project was first proposed here, uh, in front of the Board of Aldermen many years ago in 2018, I believe it was, or 2017, maybe, um, the, uh, you know, we, we had a compromise plan that we wanted the, the, the community involved, we wanted to raise money for that project, not just have it be borne on the taxpayers. And we accomplished that goal. You had a million-dollar private donor, Bank of America has donated $500,000 amongst many other sponsors, and we have raised millions upon millions of dollars for that. The public money that went into it, um, I, is being financed also by some private projects, such as the School Street Project, and spectacle management is basically taking care of the day-to-day for us. This is a win-win for our community. It brings a new vibe to our downtown, brings a new element to our downtown. As Alderman Moran said, the, afterwards, after the show, downtown was, was bustling. And that's the kind of thing that we had always envisioned would happen with the Performing Arts Center, and it was just very awesome and humbling to see that project when it was just an idea here and to be a part of that and to see it come to full fruition, um, is really something amazing, something I'm very proud of and something Nashua should be proud of because this is going to be something that for 100 years from now, people are going to say, "Isn't this a wonderful thing that we have in our city?" So we should all be proud. Thank you.
On this side. Alderman Dowd.
Hey, just a couple of quick things. We had the solar project on top of Penetech, and we were waiting for Eversource to sign the final piece of paper. I'm caught up in paperwork. And we finally sat down with Vision Energy, called Eversource, got the paper signed, and I threw the switch to turn the solar power on. We are now generating solar from the Penetech Middle School. The other thing is, we've commenced the projects for Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, and in the next few days or weeks, uh, they will be doing the preparation at the two schools for the portables to be installed there. And as soon as school is out, the work will start in earnest, the both schools simultaneously. And at least for the members who are on the joint special, I sent out the aerial photography that was taken by Channel 16, so you can see the McCarthy School's progress. It's moving along very quickly, very well. And we'll be doing a tour for everybody as soon as it warms up and all the mud dries and we can, um, get people in to see it.
Alderman Guevah.
Thank you, Madam President. Two big contracts done tonight for the Secretaries and National Police Supervisors. I think that just goes to, uh, show our commitment to making Nashua a great employer, and I deal with the State Troopers Association a lot of work, and they have heard, uh, they've lost a few troopers now to the Nashville PD, which I think is a testament to what we, we can bring to the table. So I think this is, uh, just another step in the right direction. I think it's a goal that all of us here are, should be pretty happy. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick things. So to Alderman Moran and Alderman Clemmons' points about the Performing Arts Center, um, I was there from 10:00. I walked behind the mayor and his wife to walk in, and we ended up on the stage instead of in the front of the building, but it was awesome to see it from that angle. And I didn't leave until the last performer at 4:30 and stayed there the whole time. It was, um, to see the joy on people's faces as they were looking around and how, how really wonderful this, this Performing Arts Center is. You know, it's, I, I saw, I said this last week at the Personnel Committee, I saw somebody online in one of, you know, one of my favorite Facebook sites and said, "Look at the elite, elitists of Nashua." And I was thinking, "Man, I'm elite? This is fantastic. I've reached Alderman Moran levels." Um, and so it was $15 tickets. So, you know, I don't think it was the elite, the elitists of Nashua. I think it was people that wanted to, to see this thing finally come to fruition and, and finally enjoy some local talent, which was there. We saw everything from ballet to symphony to, um, West African drumming, all over the spectrum, rock. I was sitting in the seat of the woman that was playing the guitar, and I was able to get a CD from her. So, you know, I, I think Mike O'Brien, Alderman O'Brien was actually sitting in that seat, but he lost his hearing aid, so I went up and got it anyway. Um, so, you know, I think it's good, and I think, you know, to Alderman Clemmons' point, it's a wonderful thing for the city, and I think it's really going to enhance the downtown. You're going to see restaurants try to open up there, um, and really try to benefit from this, this great thing that we have. And, uh, they did a great job, and I want to thank Rich Lannan, Mary Lou Blaisdale, uh, Devin Novatny, and Judith...
Carlson.
Carlson. That's right. Um, because they've done a really good job, and they've taken a lot of flak, and it's hard to go through this. It was a big, big project, and, um, to see the smile on Rich's face when he was emceeing the whole thing was, was great. He really, really enjoyed himself, and, uh, so I just wanted to thank them for that, and there was many more people involved, I'm sure. Last thing is, or last couple of things is, so, uh, Chief Rourke, you know, it's, it's hard to negotiate these contracts, and, you know, the leaders of the police force, like others have said here, is, is critical to make sure that our city's safe and to, uh, you know, to make sure that they have the correct pay and benefits to continue to, to be here and to attract that talent is, is fantastic. And same thing with, with anything in education. Adam Marku does, you know, he has a really tough job with all these different contracts and all these different, um, job titles that he has to make sure get proper payment, proper benefits, and he works really hard for this, this educational staff and the teachers and them. I'm, I'm, you know, very thankful for him. And lastly, Matt Sullivan, who's had to, Director Sullivan, who's had to work this Mohawk Tannery, um, these amendments to get them in so we can start working on this project that is going to have repercussions for Nashua for years to come, good repercussions as far as getting that, that site finally cleaned up and to get some housing there that we desperately need. So, thank you.
I too would like to commend everyone who participated in the, from the inception of the Performing Arts Center to its opening. It was great. It was really, really something to, to be in there. Um, after, you know, I've had a shoe club at Alex for 35 years, and I'd go in there every week and pay my shoe club. Now I get to go in there and really enjoy, you know, all the, all the entertainment that we're going to be able to, to enjoy over the years. So my kudos to everyone who was involved in that. Committee announcements. Alderman Lopez.
Uh, the Human Affairs Committee is meeting at 7:00 PM on April 17th, here in the Alderman Chamber.
That's it? Only one meeting coming up? Sweet.
It's the CDBG one, so 4:00 and 4:00.
Oh, it's a CDBG meeting, okay. Uh, Alderman Sullivan, I'm looking for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:50 PM. Thank you, everyone.